The Harvard Board of Selectmen meeting together to order for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in conjunction. Rob, do you want to open the sewer commission meeting as well?
I have a form, so.
Okay, so we will delay on opening the sewer commission meeting until a forum. Nicole is on Zoom and Nicole's going to be talking, so if you can't hear her, you just need to let us know. And what I'll try to do is if she says anything, I'll relay it to you so you guys can all hear it. First item on the agenda is the budget update, and we have Dr. Muir and Cheryl here from the school. So Nicole, did you want to start? Would you, how would you want to move through this?
Sure, Julie, can you tell me who's in the room?
So you have Cheryl and Dr. Muir from the school. You have Eric Fleming, you have Ryan Wickes, you have Leon Small, you have Cheryl Wolf, some of the others in the room. Can you just tell me, Cheryl, right behind Cheryl?
My name is Janelle.
One of our school committee?
Mark.
Hi, Mark. Hi.
Debbie Chamberlain, school committee.
Okay.
Jenna Garvey, school committee.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Sorry, Jenna, I had COVID, so like remembering people's names. I know your face and I'm like, God, I know it's Jenna. Keenan is joining us on Zoom, so we have Nicole on Zoom and Keenan is on Zoom as well.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
So in fact, you have, and there were several extra copies, you have the proposed budget for FY23. We have been read what was approved at the June 25th annual town meeting. And then we have the potential, well, we have what would it look, what it would look like had we funded the school as the assessment they requested without cutting anything from the town, which left us in a $33,816.22 deficit. I'm sorry, I got a little bit of that in. So that's in, I guess, a dark blue. Then in green, there's a no increase for QSRD, QRSD for a special town meeting on August 22nd with the same 4% assessment that was given to them at town meetings and that is recommended by the selectmen. We then have, what is it? Not an aisle, what is this thing called?
Column.
A column, a column in purple that was recommended by finance committee over two meetings. So their final recommendation on August 8th had the town services reduced and the school funded at their full 0.775%, with a $7,183.67 under 2.5. So on the, in the right where it says eight, you know, FinCom recommendation 8822 was the last, the final recommendation from the finance committee for the reduction in town services and increase in school assessment.
So at our meeting last week, the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee met and the Finance Committee, so Nicole, you've got two columns, the 88 and the 82 finance. Was that what they originally came in and what we went back to?
Yes. So on 82, they had some reductions and it had less too much, I mean, not enough really in the excess in the case we need it later on, should under 2.5. It was only a couple thousand dollars. So when finance met again with, with the selectmen, I'm going to shut my window. Motorcycle riders. They reviewed the reductions and then made different recommendations. So as you can see, I mean, do you want me to go through the reductions or just, you know, you're looking at them?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So the purple ended up being the final in what the Finance Committee is recommending. The green is what essentially the selectmen voted to recommend.
Okay. So basically, as Nicole mentioned, as we went, we met last week with the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is in support of giving the school and Finance Committee members that are on, certainly I don't want to speak for you, you can speak for yourselves. But what we understood is that the Finance Committee is in support of giving the assess, the full assessment to the school of what they were looking for. The members of the board that were here that night were not, and certainly Kelly wasn't here, but she can certainly speak if she would like.
I had relayed ahead of time to, in an email, you know, to Nicole that I would have voted the same way as my fellow members.
So in the event, and again, it's not the Finance Committee or the board, it's the townspeople who vote the budget. So if the school, the full funding for the school goes through based on what the school's looking for, that's what this worksheet summarizes, yes.
Could you verify that number because when I was looking for the school, I didn't pick the number that's your big actual number.
So we have your assessment at 2774, 275.33. Is that correct? Okay.
That's a 0.9.
Okay, yep. So that's what's in the, for those of you who have it, that's what's in the purple column. It says increase for QRSD and town service reductions. And again, we put this together because it's the, not the Finance Committee or the board, it's the townspeople who vote. So if this does pass, we just need to be sure we understood where the cuts were going to come from. And just so, for people who, these are the cuts that will happen. There's $1,500 out of the selectmen's salary, 1,000 out of selectmen's expense, 1,000 out of IT services, 500 out of assessor's expense, 1,000 out of legal, 1,000 out of election and registration. Thankfully, the town clerk stepped up and said that he wouldn't mind if we took 1,000 out. 500 out of town building, 4,000 out of fuel expense for the municipal building, 1,000 for building expense, for the police department, 3,500 out of police training expense, 1,000 out of fire department expense, $25,000 out of snow and ice, for a total of 41,000 in cuts to town departments for, to make, make us be under 2.5. Anything else, Nicole, that you want to say?
No, I mean, I think I left it open here, these columns, so it's pretty self-explanatory, especially with the color coded. So it just really goes to show what the Finance Committee is recommending versus what the selectmen are recommending. And then, as you said, it'll, you know, I don't know, do we, selectmen's budget, this will we present and allow amendments? We present some votes, that I'm not sure of. At the town meeting.
Yeah, so Ryan is in the audience, so perhaps we should ask the town clerk what protocol is.
So I'm going to look to your board for first motion.
Okay.
So if your motion is between columns.
Okay.
Obviously, unless I need to consider a recommendation, if they're not meeting that, if they're not posting a meeting that night, then they're going to recommend this approval. They then, or anybody else for that matter, can offer an amendment. And if the plan is to go forward with what they listed there, then basically I would just recognize their amendment being.
Based on.
Certain line items that are there, barring any last minute changes. Same time, you can amend an amendment. People could still come forth and amend a certain line item. So if they didn't want 25,000 out of snow and ice and only wanted 20, you could certainly do that as well. I mean, it would boil down to just each individual line item and vote on each line item if it came to that. So if, assuming that they are amended passes, it then goes to the main motion, it could still be defeated. You know, the main motion could still be defeated, in which case the budget stays the same as it was back in the year.
Okay.
I need a question on, more on the board before I open it up to Dr. Muir and Cheryl.
Would you guys like to say anything or talk to the board about?
Well, we're really here to, you know, to answer questions and to respond to any concerns that you have. I guess what I, what I would like to say is, you know, what we, I read recently a Barrett is that article on report from your last meeting where there certainly seemed to be some concerns on the part of Board of Selectmen members about our process, about, you know, some of the data that we present, the, and we, you know, I would like an opportunity to sort of address some of those concerns because we do feel as though it's important to sort of put this in perspective. I will also say that I understand, and I think I see that all school committee members might say that we understand that our communities are having difficulty with finances because if we do have the challenges that you face, when you try to find what your towns need and what your schools need. So I don't envy your submission or making these decisions. However, I do think it's important that you, some of the, some of the comments that, again, assuming that you all quoted accurately in the paper, and I understand that that doesn't always happen, I'm often misquoted, so I don't want to, to make any assumptions. But, you know, the, the approach, the collaborative approach, I do think that we, you know, we really try to be transparent with our process. We have numerous budget meetings and numerous school committees consider our budget over the course of the budget season. I think we've had, see, I have it here in my presentation, eight meetings where our budget was discussed. And we, it's often difficult to get people to attend those meetings, parents, citizens, and town officials. And we feel like we really try to be open about what our budget process is. We do not build the budget based on the wish list, and I don't think it's important to drive that one through. Our budget is large. We have almost 400 employees, we have two, over 2,000 students that we provide services for, that we can have a large budget. It's expensive to run a school district. But we don't, we are cognizant as we build the budget that we do not ask for things that we don't ask, that feel we, that our students and our staff absolutely need. We have been able to reduce the budget over a series of, over a series of meetings, partially because when we start to build our budget in December, we don't have all of the information that we need to make accurate predictions, as I'm sure is the same, I'm guessing is the same for the communities. We use, our enrollments change from December to June. Our costs, projected costs of things like fuel, oil, all of those things, they change. We don't necessarily do all of those, we make projections when we build the budget, and over time, those projections become real hard and fast numbers that we can then modify the budget. So some of the changes in reductions that you see over the course of the, of the budget reduction cycle that we've gone through reflect more after information. They don't necessarily reflect the things of plus, but they're not necessarily cut, being that when we built up the budget, we built it purposely as a wish list. And I think that's really important, it's hard to explain that, but, but it is clearly discussed as we go through the budget process, where the cuts are coming from and why we feel that it's appropriate to make those cuts. We don't just build the budget and stick with it because it's the budget that we think we need. When, when we can, we make the cuts that we can to make it as manageable as possible for the communities. I do think that it's, there was a comment, I think, made in the newspaper about, you know, paying more for your school budget than is required. That's true. This community and almost every other community in the state of Massachusetts, with the exception of, I think it's five, nine school districts in the state of Massachusetts do not pay more than they're required, only nine. And some of those, most of those are the school districts that got funded when the student opportunity went into effect, the Urban Center, the Hall in Brockton, they got a very wide team box of money. And they are no longer having to pay more than required local for the furthest distances. But every other, every other student is the same, with the exception of nine. They do, it's reality. Schools are not funded the way they shouldn't in the state. And if.
Like the data, George, or the thing, no, that.
So on that chart.
Are these copies for all of us, Cheryl?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can see on this chart that Cheryl just pointed out on the right side are, is the ranking of communities with the highest percentage of next spending as a percentage of foundation. The column that's highlighted in yellow there, and Cheryl, you can probably explain it better than I can, but you can see that the community of problem staff, for example, the number one is spending 452.5% more than foundation. And if you go through, you can see all the communities, all of which are more than 100% of foundation. On the fourth page, there is Quavon, where 134. And at the very bottom of the last page, you will see that of the 319 districts.
I didn't see that at all.
Formed a nothing court, the borough district did not report, so. So the good, so the last nine that are just shy of 100% of their required local contributions are in my public hearing presentation, I showed the school committee, where did all the chapter 70 money go this year? Springfield got an additional 38, 35.8 million dollars in chapter 78. They don't need to pay any more than the minimum. Lynn got 28.6 million dollars more. New Bedford, 25.3 million dollars more. Fall River, 23 million. They got all of the chapter 70 money out of the Student Opportunity Act, so they don't need to get more money from their community. They got huge increases in state aid. Those nine districts are in my list of who got all the money this year. So basically, and you've heard us talk about this year after year, the foundation budget is vocally inadequate to pay for costs. Student Opportunity Act proved that, and they move forward with eight different categories of expenses that are increasing over time, but they know the foundation budget, which is your required local contribution, it doesn't pay our expenses, and this kind of report kind of proves that. So the other information that we want to share is that we do feel as though there's, I've had a couple of conversations with Nicole regarding the relationship between the district's overall budget percentage increase and the assessment increase. And it's hard to explain to, it's hard to explain it on the town meeting floor, it harder when I was asked the question, it's a really, it's a very complicated formula. But the relationship between our budget, which is now at a 2% increase, and your assessment increase, which is 6.9, is really dependent on your required local contribution, which is based on property value in your community and income value, of the income levels of your community members, and the percentage of students that you have overall in the Quavon regional district. So when your required local contribution goes up, and your number of children, percentage wise, and the overall enrollment in the district goes up, your requirement, your assessment rises significantly. Those are numbers that have nothing to do with our budget and everything to do with factors that are outside of your control and outside of our control. We create, Cheryl created a graph that I think is really impactful, and I would like to share it with you, because we have been asked by the communities, if you could just predict your budget, we could, you could predict your contribution to our budget, it would be much easier for you to figure. Well, this chart, I think, is really shows very clearly that there is no relationship, there's no statistic, statistical correlation between budget increase and assessment. Sorry, I only wanted to, I took it out of the package. So the, the chart on, I think that's easiest to look at is one in the bottom of page six, which is one of that. You have.
There's a copy for you, I've got a little, some marks on there, so.
But that chart there is showing you, it's on the bottom of page six, is the Harvard. The dark line, the black line on the graph is our budget increase over the years. The yellow line is Harvard's assessment over the years. So if you look at two data points that really illustrate this phenomenon quite clearly is if you look at this current fiscal year FY23, the black line is showing a 2% increase, that's the Quavon budget increase. Your assessment, yellow line, is at 6.9%. Three years ago in FY20, our budget increase was also 2%. Your assessment was a decrease that year of 1.9%. There were other data points that are very similar. If you look at the previous year FY18, 1.8% budget increase, 0.9% assessment increase. The graphs on the other area on that page are just the same, it just added all the communities to that. So that chart on the top of page six is a five-year analysis. On page five, at the bottom, is a 10-year analysis, and at the top of page five is a 23, 23-year analysis. So again, it's, it's, there's something that we wanted to point out to you because it, and the garden, where we have a 2% increase right now this year, to your, to your town, it is a 6.9% increase, but it's, part of that is based on those factors that either the school district controls or officials necessarily control, and the factors that are turning around the problem of that state establishment. I also think that one, one thing, I think I would just be interested in, in knowing from the board, if, if in fact, one of the consultants hears the process that we use and the level of collaboration that we have with the community, I'd love to hear more about, you know, what you're looking for as we move into future years for collaboration. And in the phone presentation on several occasions, that what you would look for in a collaborative process and. You know, one thought like that, like, if I can help, we feel that interest.
I guess I can, I can speak, and I do appreciate that you guys are both, both here and the school committee members are here to sort of talk through the process. I sort of feel like, and I, I didn't read the article, so I don't know what was quoted as saying, so I don't know if it's true or not true, but I'll tell you honestly, we're on YouTube, so you can watch the, you can watch the meeting at any time. I went on the Finance Committee for several years, and then I've been, this is my second term on the board. And in the past, I think we've met with you more often during the year, maybe before the budget process. So yes, we can attend the budget hearings that the school has, but I believe in addition in the past, the school would come to us during the budget process and have a conversation about the budget, and so you would sort of know, you know, hands on where we were. I appreciate the graphs and I appreciate sort of everything that you've presented. The reality that we face economically is that the school's increase this year is our, is almost our exact increase in our limit that we can actually raise. So before we give any other town departments increases, we're already at the limit, and I understand it's a function of enrollment and all of that kind of stuff, but that's sort of the struggle that we face. I think, and I can't, again, Nicole can speak or the other members can speak, I just, I think it would be, I think it's important when we're going through the budgeting process that you understand the pain we're feeling on our side, so when we push back a little bit, that you sort of have a frame of reference. There were a number of years that, for whatever reason, you know, whether it was, it's been pointed out that it was partially our own fault because of our financial situation or our town employees didn't get raises. It was a period of six or seven years, I think, that they got nothing because we couldn't make it work within our budget. And so we're trying to right size and try to, it's difficult to be, be the end all for everybody. We frequently go to the end of our meeting and have significantly underfunded town budgets, and we have to scramble at the end to figure out how to fund them. And so I think sort of having a collaborative discussion throughout the year, I think is helpful for us. We also are going to get to the point where our assessment isn't going to be sustainable within our budget, and that's sort of what the concern is. If we go up and get the $95,000 this year for our assessment, we're already potentially behind the game for next year. And if, and I think that's maybe the concern. And I know our assessment's going to fluctuate based.
Yeah, so that's what I commented, what Dr. Muir was talking to you and pointing out to you, that this year's assessment has zero impact on what next year's assessment.
Well, I, but I'm, I'm saying what, that's what the thinking is, Cheryl. I'm saying that's what the thinking is.
That's not the truth.
Well, maybe not, and it's good to point it out, but I think there are, the thought process is that if we continue increasing the assessment for the school, that it's not sustainable within the town's budget.
We gave 20 years of data that don't, that show the opposite.
I understand that, I understand that.
Change of thought.
But, but I think, so that's a prime example of conversations throughout the year instead of a budget time when we're saying, hey, we can't afford this. That's what we're saying to you.
When, when during the year would you know that? We wouldn't know that until we met with our school committee. We wouldn't know that in September, October, November. We wouldn't know that, we wouldn't know where we are yet. And you, you made a comment that sounded as if we didn't come to see you this year. We were here on April 25th to meet with the board. We got no, no questions from your board.
Honestly, and that's, and partially because we probably didn't have the information as well. So I, I, it's a, I'm not saying it's all on the school, Cheryl. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
I'm not trying to be argumentative either, but we have five towns with 10. I'm not trying to be argumentative either, but we have five towns with 10 boards. We can't possibly go to 20 meetings to discuss our $36 million budget. But if someone from, one representative from each of your boards attended our public hearing, then they could have asked questions that aren't clear. We presented awful lot of data at our public hearing.
And I, I don't disagree. What we've talked about with some of the other towns, and this has been talked about for a long time, is collaborating, towns meeting on a more frequent basis, and maybe the schools involved in that. So you're not coming to 10 or 20 meetings, you're coming to a group of, because not everyone can attend your, your budget hearings. Not everyone from every board or every finance committee can. So maybe if we did it at the local level where everybody gets together and it's one meeting you go to, and whoever can attend can attend, and maybe it's, I'm just relaying what we're hearing and what, you know, the feeling is that it just, I don't know. I'm giving you what I'm hearing and what the opinions are. We're struggling, we're struggling as a town. We're spending an awful lot of money on things to try to get things back to where they need to be. And we just want to make sure the school understands that. You, you're seeing, we're cutting services if we need to fund this. And at some point, there's got to be a give somewhere. I don't know where that is. But if we
What services?
We're, we're cutting out of service budgets, basically. We're cutting, you heard them, we're cutting police. We're cutting police, we're cutting fire, highway. Those are our main services, and you know, I, I get it, I understand.
I didn't mean to cut you off, no, no. Maybe it's not the question about the process. Do you need a similar process to what you're describing for the other regional school district that you belong to?
Julie, can you repeat that? Sorry, I can't hear really what you're saying. Dr. Muir asked if we have a similar process with Pathfinder. So Pathfinder holds a, a public hearing that is, it's not, the school committee is there, but it's primarily geared towards, it's not a school committee meeting. It's geared towards the town.
By law, the public hearing is
It is, it is, it is a school committee meeting, but school committee business is not conducted. It's just, the school committee is there, it's in the context of the school committee, but it's a, really a public forum where select boards, finance committee members, and the whole budget is presented.
That's all that we know.
That's fine.
Exactly what we do, Julie. Exactly what we
We also have the luxury of Julie being on that committee and relating back to us.
That's, that's a different story, but that's exactly how we do it. And, and the posting comes to you and you're invited to the meeting and we go through our entire budget? It's the exact same thing, and, and yet you're saying that's okay with you.
Julie, can I say something?
The rest of the board doesn't need to go.
Oh, I've been before. I've never said before, I've been to your meetings too before. I, I think what Julie, back when, we all sat on FinCom together and the school would come to finance committee meetings and we would meet with you folks early in the process. And I think now, it's, a lot of the towns are struggling and they're reaching out so that, you know, it's not just us.
No, we're ready to. We will come to any meeting that we're invited to. We are happy to come to any meeting. We went to every town, we go to every town, every spring. Right, we do. And, and it, it feels as though those questions when we get to the end, that does a lot of criticism of the process. And that doesn't really feel collaborative, to be honest. We're happy to come to any meeting. And I guess we've always tried to do that, but we do have five towns. And so, you know, there's, there's a limit to the number of meetings, but we can attend it as well. You know, it, it's, I, I have to say that it's hard to come to a town meeting and hear no questions asked about the other regional school districts. Like, not one question. And you're paying over $2,000 per student more to that regional school district than you pay at Quaden. Over 2,200 per student this year. That's based on what our requested budget assessment was for you at your county meeting. Now it's going to be even more. And there's a question about how they go their budget. And maybe you're all well-informed about that, but it just, it doesn't seem that they're worth, to be honest. I know, I understand that our number is much greater because we have a much greater number of your children in our district. And that's why we're asking for this and our students and families to make it. I'm not mistaken, the problem. So, you know, I think if we, if we could find a, a way of mirroring the process that you use there because that, that might, might be helpful. And again, we're happy to come to the meeting. We're happy to hear things or any questions that you may have now that will help you better understand why our children need, our school is restricted as long. We have children, we have a great number of children post-pandemic. We have, who are, who are considered chronically absent. We have students who are not coming to school many, many times. And we're not alone, all school districts across the state are experiencing a fraction, 30% of students in some of our schools are chronically absent. That means they miss 10% or more days, 18 or more days of school this year. That's a tremendous, just that one thing alone is a tremendously challenging for us that we've never had to face before. That's one tiny example of the challenges that the COVID-19 pandemic brought to schools in general, not just Quaden. How are we going to get those students, how many, that 30%? That's almost one third of our students. How are we going to get them to school? Not by doing things the same way we always have in the U of M. Because they're not coming for that. We need additional people to reach out, we need people, we have people, our social workers are visiting homes to try to get students to come to school on a regular basis. We can't educate them. And again, I'm just trying to articulate one tiny factor that has made it so much more difficult for us to provide what children need. Education isn't what it was three years ago. It certainly isn't what it was 10 years ago. And Quaden's now different than any other school district. These challenges are real. And if we don't educate the children and we don't educate them well, the communities are going, the community in general is going to suffer. All these are important to communities. And I know that you all understand that and agree with that. So I know in some way I'm preaching to a choir, but, but it is important for us to think about how do we, how the, the requests that we're making are not, are not in any way the request of a school district that is a luxury school district. They're not buying, they're not buying a luxury, a luxury education. Here you're buying a good education, a solid education that looks very different than what education looked like three years ago.
I have a question. Can I ask a question?
You can, Brian.
So I'm a, my kids were a little fisher. And we were shooting an email the other day, talking about your town, for you wants to attend our county meeting. So the email said that if they're voted down, there's significant cuts they're going to have to make. So I think it would be helpful if me, you know, could know what those cuts would have to be. What is the school cutting out? Are they cutting out, you know, gym? Are they cutting out, for special thing? Where it's not finding tablets this year for the kids to use? Like, those are important things I think to help people understand. You know, if you're telling me that the school's not going to be able to afford to buy $100 tablets this year for the kids to use, I'm going to say, don't buy the tablets there. But if it's, you know, something different, like, hey, we're going to have to fire five teachers or lay off five teachers. You know, I think that's important for the community members to understand, rather than just an email that's saying you have to make cuts. Or what are the cuts they're going to have to make? Is, is something important.
Well, it depends on, I can, I can answer the magnitude of the cuts and it depends on where, where, where our budget is. It's in terms of what the final budget is that we set at. But based on the amounts that were approved by the town of Hardwick, I believe it would be just rare, okay. About $72,000 are going to have to cut to make the, to make the budget work, which was loaded at, by the target term, at the target term meeting. The vast majority of our budget is salaries. So I can't see for the school committee, we will have to go in and look at what, we cannot cut gym. We cannot eliminate gym because of the state law that we offered. And so I would tell you for sure that will not be completely eliminated. It might be reduced significantly. Things that we don't have to by law offer would be the places we would go. Things like things like that. There's nothing that we can cut that isn't going to impact the quality of education. We can have an assessor, so it's not, we thought that isn't going to impact the quality of what children's experience. So I would tell you that for sure, because otherwise we would be in a lot of different, to begin with. Things that, that we, you know, again, that we don't have to offer by law. Already, our class sizes in our elementary schools, in some cases, are larger than we would like them to. We're going to have class sizes of 28, then 19 in many elementary schools across the district this year. That's not, that's not ideal. We have high-quality teachers, and those high-quality teachers will do a great job with those classes of that size. But that is not, that would not be my, of course, I would find you with a budget that I wish for, I would be requesting probably six more elementary teachers to reduce those class sizes. We have just, and again, this is a perfect example of when we built our budget, of the new one example, when we built our budget, we planned for one grade-two teacher in Elham. We now have 33 students in that one grade-two classroom. Now we have 33 students in a grade-two classroom. So we had to shift, I think, I can add a teacher to the budget at this point. So we had to shift the classroom teacher from another position where it doesn't look like they're going to need it right now based on enrollment, but it's a kindergarten position. We never know what our kindergarten enrollment is going to be until probably three days after the school year starts. Because even though we do tremendous levels of outreach into the community to try to connect with all of those families, oftentimes, two or three days before the school year starts, we have a lot of kindergarten students involved that we, we know are out there. So, so I can't answer with certainty what is your actual school community decision about what would be cut. We would certainly go through the budget again and the recommendations where we felt there was the least harm going to come to the quality of education. But honestly, there isn't any place that I can think of that that we're going to be able to cut that will not impact negatively in some aspect of our educational program.
Right.
Sure. Could you, Dr. Muir, per regards to, because it's only 75,000 additional that's been before, and funded by, not by what was already voted for, how does that translate into 570,000 that you said would be a cut? So you're referring to more budget than has already been? So where's 75,000? The other remaining towns have the other 549,500 change, is that correct?
Correct. Well, yeah, yes, yes, in total, yes.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
When you guys closed the New Braintree school, now, is this Elham situation part of closing New Braintree?
No, the Braintree, the Braintree grade school was not closed. We moved
You moved all the students out, but I sat with three of you and I said, oh, where you did that?
Yes, no, it's not. The, the populations of New Braintree, the student populations of New Braintree in Elham have been merged for many years. So grade, the kindergarten and grade-one students from both towns in New Braintree grade school and two through six, now five, attended Elham. So the, those student populations have been merged for many, many years. It's just the location of where all the classes were held is now kindergarten grade one are now being held in Elham. So that didn't have any effect. It's just students moving in, quite frankly. They have people moving into our communities. And sometimes people move out of our communities and our class size drops below what we had predicted. It's, it's hard, it's hard to predict. Generally, our, our enrollments stay relatively stable, but there are times when we build the budget and we look at the class size and we say, okay, there's 27 students in that classroom. As long as it stays 27, we're okay. But if three students move in, then we're at 30. But we, we, you know, we try to be as conservative, conservative as we can be when we look at those class sizes in December and through the, through the budget process. An example is when we built the budget in December, we had requested an additional teacher for levels in the school. It looked like the enrollments in, I think it was grade three, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, were, were high enough that we were wanting to need an additional teacher in levels in the school. As the year progressed and as the budget process progressed, those enrollments dropped a little bit and we said, we're not, we're going to pull that. That's one of the cuts we made along the way in our budget-cutting process because those enrollments stabilized a little bit, they dropped a little. We think we're going to be fine without that additional teacher, so we pulled it out of the budget. That's, it's work we do, I mean, during, during the summer, we check, we check, literally we check enrollments every single Monday. We look at the enrollments and say, what's changed? Because people are coming into our office daily to enroll students and also to withdraw, not many withdrawals, more enrollments. Maybe because our overall enrollment actually increased this year. But, but our biggest cost center, as you know, is salaries. And so adding a teacher, when you didn't build it into the budget, is a big deal. And say, just sadly, when you don't really need it, is also a big deal. And so we watch it, we watch it very, very carefully. You want to say something really to get us to focus on?
Did I say something? I apologize for not being there. I misunderstood what Zoom meeting was. I thought you guys didn't, weren't, didn't want people there.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine.
And I'd just like to say thank you for listening to us. And from everything I've seen, talked to, listened from people, we have a very, very good school system.
I don't remember what I was going to say, but I will say I don't think any one of us up here disagree with anything that you've said tonight, Dr. Muir. It's just, you know, our job also is to make sure that our town has services too. So we, it's a real struggle for us to try to find that balance. No one's disagreeing that our kids, you know, No one's disagreeing that our kids, you know, shouldn't get the best education. Um, it's, it's tough, and every year it's getting tougher to hit that two and a half, so, um, you know. We're here pleading our case too, I guess.
I think we all appreciate that.
You know.
We do understand that you are trying to, um, you know, support, support community services that are extremely important. I've said it many times, I've lived in these communities almost all my life, and I do understand how important it is for the future of a community to have strong town government and strong schools, you know, strong community services. It's, it's really important, and I think I understand the struggle is many ways propositions to put it out. And I'd love to collaborate on communities to try to work on that problem, because I think that is one of the things that, um, that is really, really, really small. Then I will say, you know, I have worked really hard. I was appointed, uh, member of the, uh, the Schools Commission. I was, uh, the, appointed by Governor Baker as the, um, Massachusetts Community School Representative to the Rural Schools Commission and, um, spent a whole year studying and hearing testimony from rural communities about, um, the challenges that rural communities have, funding their communities and also funding new schools. And, um, that report was just released recently. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna get any traction in, uh, at the state level, but I, I do know that, um, the whole thing that, um, your association, that's New School Association, will help support bringing that to light. Uh, I know that to the parent association, the school community association, and the regional school district association are really gonna push hard, um, with our, um, federating representatives from across the state to try to, with some strong recommendations in that report that will, um, if funded and implemented, contribute to texture, uh, and really help with some of these challenges. We also think, we also believe that, um, hopefully in one, maybe two years, Student Opportunity Act will actually have a positive effect on Quabon's funding from the state level. We, uh, as you probably know, we've, um, been in what's called Quabon Stat. Means because of declining enrollment, the state feels they are overfunding us by, by, uh, last year it was about five million, five and a half million dollars. Now, we've closed that gap and it's only two, one, two point seven million, I think. Um, so we closed that gap by fifty percent in one year with the changes in the funding. That funding percentage decrease continues. One year from now, we might be at zero whole time stat. And the following year, we might really see a significant increase in our state funding. That's all dependent on whether the Student Opportunity Act is funded as, as they promised they would. Um, but we do think that there's, there is a light at the end of the tunnel if the Student Opportunity Act plays out for our, for our school district, um, as it is predicted to. So I, I do think that there's hope that, you know, we won't have such, we won't have such a difficult time with our budget. We won't have to, um, you know, struggle as much with our budget, but that remains the same. We can't, that's not reality right now, I, I understand that. But, um, but I do think that there is a real possibility that, based on, you know, what we've seen in the last year, that, um, could, could put you in some difficulty in here for a couple of years.
Nicole, you wanted to say something earlier and we didn't, I didn't recognize you, I'm sorry. Did you wanna say something still?
Um, I, I, you know, I can't really hear anybody in the audience. I certainly wasn't privy to any of the data or any of the sheets that you have, that nobody sent them to me digitally or anything like that to review. So I, I don't have necessarily any comments on that tonight. Um, I think, I think when, when I'm talking about the whole collaboration effort, um, what I mean is typically, you know, in a, in a, in a town, the professional staff will get together and start to develop the budget. So they, you know, not just develop it on your own, then saying, here it is in your face, but more so, um, very quickly, I'll bore everybody, you know, um, okay, well, you need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital projects from Hardwick. Okay, well, you have five million dollars in E and D, maybe you can take it from that this year. Or, you know, I, it's just different types of conversations that we have that we can work together to try to get to that common ground by the time the budget is presented, by the time any of the budgets are presented. So we work closer together with knowing how much money each town has and each town can have the ability to give. It's more like getting blood from a stone. And I'm echoing especially Hubbardston, and I'm speaking loudly, so hopefully they can hear me, uh, on YouTube. But, um, that, that says for five years now, this has not been collaborative. It's like not come to the public hearing and ask questions, but how about if we all get together beforehand and say, you know, these are our projected numbers. We also just estimate, that's what we do until May, because we don't exactly know. But we have an idea, we have trends, we have forecasting, we know a little bit. Maybe you don't know exactly what we're gonna get in chapter seventy, but, you know, surely not gonna get less than this year. So there's ways to kind of work at it to where we, you know, can get to at least a sort of common ground where we can, we can, we don't get to this point where we fail it at town meetings. Because to me, you know, this is my first year in a regional school, but that's the last place I wanna be. I do not wanna be in a disagreement or in, in not in conjunction with the other departments of the town while we come to town meeting and have this on the floor. I would much prefer this to be, uh, you know, a more informal process in the early part of the year and then, you know, finance reports. But typically, you know, the, the, the professional staff get together, we know where the funding sources are coming from. Um, you know, they, like our ARPA, they have Esther III. I think they have one point six million dollars in Esther III, can be used for like one-time, one-time purchases. So, you know, these things behind the scenes, I think, could be so important for all of us, and I mean all five towns, working with the school department itself throughout the year and early on in the budget process, not just showing up at the budget hearing, but having, uh, a collaborative effort all the way through. And so without seeing any of that, and, you know, I certainly can't comment on any of those, those data points and, and, and those types of things, right? I mean, I guess we could just acknowledge receipt of those documents and take it under advisement. And I can't hear what they're saying about assessments. I know we're over a million dollars on what we're assessed, what, what our required assessment is. So, um, I, I can't really comment on what I'm not hearing. So I, that's all, that's all, though.
We'll, we'll make sure that we leave the assessment. So what, what Cheryl and Dr. Muir presented was, um, a listing of the net school spending, um, for all of the districts, and it showed that Quabon was one thirty-four, I believe. One thirty-four, meaning it was ranked highest to the lowest. So they're in the middle of the group. That's basically what was presented. And the other graphs that were presented, I believe, were handed out at the last hearing.
Well, no, just please, those are for a new client.
Oh, these are.
The data has been provided all along, the graphs are just.
Oh, okay, these are new for us, okay.
They have to send those to Nicole.
That'd be great, just to show.
We literally just, Cheryl just finished this moments before the meeting, so, um, we didn't have time to send anything out so far.
Sure.
I'd like to address what Nicole is saying about collaboration and meeting through the year. And I apologize to those members in advance.
Can we just make sure she can hear you first? Nicole, can you?
Turn around and associate with Nicole.
Sure.
I was asked on a cover meeting that the town administrators had earlier this year, and I'm gonna echo what I said at that meeting right now. We are not a department of the town, and at that meeting, they kept asking us to, to do things or to say things, or can we do this and can we do that? And I keep saying no, because we report to the school committee, and I can't and I won't share information to a town administrator or a board of selectmen before it goes to our school committee. It's, that's just not the way it happens. So as, if, if the town doesn't wanna come to a meeting that we're having, we can call a meeting of all five town administrators or whatever after we meet with the school committee. But I will not present information that they haven't seen first.
Okay, um, that, everybody does that for us to say, I don't wanna go there. But it's, what I wanna say is that, you know, you're building a budget based on am- amount of money that you have no idea what the town can even afford yet.
That's.
So you don't even come to us with anything that we could possibly afford.
Right. But I, we don't, we don't. We don't build a budget based on revenue. We build a budget based on our expenses. We understand that, because we don't know our revenue stream until the middle of January. Next year, we won't know until the middle of February, because a new governor has an additional month. We build a budget based on what our expenses are expected to be. If our revenue stream doesn't fund it, that puts us where we are today. But I, we, we don't, we can't and we don't start the other way. Say, well, let's see what we think we might have for revenue and then build the budget. That's not the way we build a thirty-six million dollar budget.
Okay, all right.
So, so can I offer this in the interest of sort of moving this forward? Um, it's clear that there's been a breakdown somewhere on, you know, whether us saying to you what we're looking for or perhaps not participating enough in what we should be participating. It's clear, and, um, we don't, we don't want this to be an adversarial, I don't want this to be an adversarial relationship. It's not what I'm about. We're telling you our concerns, sorry if it's not coming out proper or it's upsetting you, not the goal. We wanna have open dialogue. Um, and whether we've missed that opportunity along the way or, um, you know, we've, we talked about, we talked about with, um, Braintree, Hubbardston recently getting together as towns on a more periodic basis. We hear, we get town reports from our other town departments, hey, this is going well, hey, this isn't going well. I'm not sure if you share stuff like that with your school committee, but if, if, if we can't attend your meeting, if you can get that down to us, the K R enrollments up or whatever, just to give us a heads up along the way, um, I, I don't know. I'm grasping here. I, I'm grasping at things to try to make this process. Probably nothing more uncomfortable. I wasn't at the town meeting, so I don't, I only know what I heard. But probably a challenging thing for you to have to defend your budget on the town floor. Not something I ever wanted to do or, or be challenged, you know?
Yeah, we, we don't, I, I don't mind answering any question or anything. Um, and, and again, I think that, um, respecting your positions and your perception and your decisions is important. But we also feel as though it's important for the, um, school committee members who are elected officials in each community, they have a job to do. And I'll try to speak for them, but they have a job to do, and their job is to approve a budget that they feel is what the school district needs. And, um, defending a budget is something I have no problem with. Explaining a budget and the relationship between assessments and, um, budget is challenging because it's very, very complex. And so to try to explain that on town meeting floor is next to impossible. And I'm not, it, it's, it's pointless, because it starts to sound like you are, um, that it's not a transparent process, because it's far too complicated. And that's why it's, it's very difficult to, for us to come to a, um, as Cheryl explained, it's very difficult for us to come to a finance meeting. We'll come to any meeting, select or meeting, and in fifteen minutes or without taking, you know, hours of your time to explain this, um, maybe the solution is to meet with all of us simultaneously. We're happy to, um, we're happy to do anything that, that anyone feels will improve the process. We want to, we want to people to understand, to feel that we are collaborative. Um, but there are certain things that we are not allowed to do. So Nicole just made a comment about, um, funding capital expenses for Hardwick out of E and D. Well, the regional agreement stipulates how capital expenditures are paid for if it's a Hardwick community. That, that's a regional, that's a five-town agreement. We can't violate that. Um, so that's not something that we can, we could discuss it, but basically the conversation is going to be, well, that's actually not possible. But I will tell you what we have done. In the past three years, we've funded capital improvements on the high school, almost eight hundred thousand dollars of capital improvements on the high school out of our rural schools money. That would have been expenses that, in other circumstances, would have been put toward the towns. And we've done what we can because we have that rural schools money. It's not a funding source that we can depend on. It's a funding source that if they decide to fund it, happens. Um, but we have tried, when we can, to take the burden off the communities, and that's one way we've done it, is that almost eight hundred thousand dollars of capital expenditures that are for middle, were for middle high school projects, the Chiller Tower and other capital expenditures that needed to be, needed to be done. We've done that out of our rural schools money. We could have funded other things. We could have, you know, bought some more materials or things like that, but we, we, we try, we try when we can to support the communities in ways that we also can, because we do understand your, your challenges. And I'm sure we don't understand them as deeply as you do, because it's not our business to run, run a town, it's your business. Um, but again, I think the, the point is that clearly, um, we respect the need for a, a different process, and we're not married to our process. We want to, um, do what we can to, um, increase communication, if you feel that will help. We're, we're open to you like this, we, we're, we're not. But, uh, we also recommend each other providing what the children need.
Um, any other questions from our board? So I, I guess the purpose of her having this.
Cheryl has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl.
Oh, Cheryl.
No, Cheryl, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't. You need to put your hand. You have the same problem I do in terms of height.
Um, I'd like to take a second to explain the finance teams' approach and what we've got. Now, I went to one of the Quabon, we've been meeting everyone, and I know Nicole and Nicole do it. So we have been at some of these meetings and looked at the budget and spent time with it. And a two percent increase is very modest in today's economy. And the cuts that we made to make doing the Quabon budget possible under two and a half, we cut nothing that hadn't already been increased. We went, did not go back to level funding on any single line item. I can go through and, and show you, but you were there. Uh, so I don't feel that this is a hardship budget. I feel it's a very acceptable, uh, compromise. And that's what we voted.
I think people get two percentage respective. Our fuel oil alone, and we did it in a time before COVID, our fuel oil increased by a dollar twenty-nine. That's a point six percent of that two percent. Oil alone, and we haven't done nothing yet.
We, um, we, I don't know if you have the state, I think we can pull up Cheryl, but we, we, other regional school district budget increases. And when I sent it to the, oh, no, okay, well, we didn't send it to you, but we, I sent out an inquiry to superintendents across the state, other regional superintendents, and just said, could you share what the budget increase percentages are? Uh, we did, we did, uh, it's just, um, basically, we didn't, we didn't all do it. But we heard from, I would say about ten, um, regional school districts, and they all had budget increases greater than two percent. Again, it's not a hundred percent of them, but I just felt as though I wanted to understand, you know, how do we compare to other regional school districts, um, across the state? And it was. And it was evident based on the information that was shared um, that our budget increase is lower. Than again, all of the, all of the districts who responded to my new three. So we can share that information with you. Um, but you know, just to support, to, I guess, drive forward the point that we, we do think that a two percent increase is modest. Our contracted, contracted salary increases this year were one point, one point five percent. Last year they were one point two five percent.
Julie?
We're negotiating new contracts with all six large businesses for next year. Position is eight and a half percent right now.
Nicole, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to um, reply to Cheryl Wolf, our finance committee member. Uh, not to, to her, but regarding her comment and uh, it's true that we raised some of the budget line items this year that they uh, proposed to cut. However, again, if we can reiterate how, how underfunded they've been for all of these years. So we've been severely underfunded in these budgets. And this is where the proposal of over a million dollars over the required contribution, we felt was sufficient. And I know they say some of our one point five percent raises, I saw, you know, some people got three sh- sharp. I'm sorry, Sheila got two point nine. So there are other raises in there. I see, I, their whole budget's on their website. I've gone through it. I've seen the percentages in the other districts. I've seen it all. Um, and I am still of the mind that I do believe that what we presented at town meeting is a very fair budget to give to the school district.
So um, I guess I would say to this group, we um, we came up with um, our vote last week. Um, we need to come up with our position. Are we sticking with our position? Do we feel comfortable with the position we're taking? Um, are we wanting to change our position approaching town meetings?
I have to put you both on the spot, but we have to make a decision.
I mean, my, my personal feeling is we have forty thousand dollars to keep us basically under two and a half. And the school came back with ninety, ninety thousand, seventy thousand.
I think seventy-five.
Seventy-six. No, sorry, seventy-six. So that wasn't quite, we still can't cover that. So basically leaving it in the hands of voters, I believe. So I'm finally leaving it in the hands of voters. We, we had a budget already and if we can't, we need someone to have to help cut it. But it's, it's, we're just gonna be back in the spring trying to find forty or fifty or a hundred and eighty thousand dollars somewhere.
Can I say one more thing?
Can you, can we just let Kelly finish for a second, Nicole?
Oh yeah, sorry, sorry Kelly.
If Kelly wants to say.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Um, I, I agree with that. It is, ultimately it's up to the voters. Um, I do think that the budget that we presented in June, I, I do still stand behind that. Because we do have to fund, our departments have been underfunded for a long time. And we're just trying to gain some ground on that. And unless we can, things are still gonna struggle. We're, we're in the same position and, and I respect your position. I do and I, I know you respect ours. Um, I don't know if we should be making a decision on how we're gonna present the article though. I don't know if that's what Julie was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking.
We're the ones.
We have to present the article, so um, Nicole, did you, did you have something relevant to this that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say quickly, I met with Desi and D O R yesterday uh, over Zoom. Just discussing this type of thing and formulas and regional budgets versus, you know, very depressed uh, small community, rural community budgets. Um, and they, they did basically reassure me that in the event that the commissioner, which is the last thing they want to do. They, they like the towns to handle it themselves. We know what we need. They like the towns to handle it. In the event the commissioner is the one to make the decision, they will, she said, it was the assistant, but she said she, you know, couldn't necessarily speak for the commissioner, but ninety-nine percent sure the commissioner would come back with a revised number. Nobody would ever go back to the original request that came to us, you know, before they revised it. So it's not like they're gonna go back to the two point nine five. If anything, this, this Desi would go back to the two point seven seven four. So in the event that the town still was adamant that, you know, the four percent assessment is enough. And for anybody who would be afraid that Desi is gonna come back and give them the full assessment and we're gonna have to come up with hundreds of thousands of dollars, that's not the case. In the event we did have to do that later on in the year, it would be their most recent assessment. With that being said, um, it's hard to set a tax rate when we don't have this done.
So, so I guess I would say just to clarify Nicole, because I saw some eyebrows sort of go up in the audience, just to clarify. So I think what you're saying is that, through your meeting with Desi and D O E, they said that the commissioner wouldn't likely come back with more than the current assessment that the school is looking for. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Seven seven four, okay. Because there are a lot of numbers sort of flying around in your conversation, just so we understand. I'm honestly.
Sorry, I certainly don't want to be confusing because it's already confusing enough.
That's okay. So honestly, um, being on the finance committee mem- uh, being a finance committee member for years and being on the board. The townspeople um, do whatever they want to do, that's the answer, and they should. Um, I, I think that, I think each um, I think each group is gonna present their position. We're well-aligned that if the townspeople decide that they're going to, that the selectmen are only making a recommendation. So um, hearing that, you know, the other members of the board sort of feel like we want to stick with the original position. I think that's, but we're prepared that if this passes, that it's here.
This is how it's gonna pass.
And certainly anyone can amend the motion on the floor. Um, and um, we're prepared to do that if that's the case. Anything else? We have, um, I appreciate that you've come in um, and appreciate that maybe it's um, clearly a, a sign what the dialogue I've heard tonight is that a sign that we need to be a little bit more proactive versus reactive with the school and discussions. And whoever's part that's on, I think we need to sort of work that out. Um, and certainly um, I'm, you know, willing to do that and appreciate all the data and the information that you've put together. Any other questions before we leave this subject? Thank you both. Um, well, um, if, is there a, a presentation, like a presentation that you are gonna do? That, do you want to, or? Do you want me just to, I can, you don't have to send this. I can just make, leave this for Nicole if you want. Yeah, we can leave that for her so she, so she has it.
I actually spoke to Nicole about that um, today. We talked a little bit longer about that with her.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly share it with her and um, I hope going forward that the process um, is a little smoother. Um, we understand that um, it just, it just needs to happen that way. Nobody wants to feel, I, I feel uncomfortable, honestly. I'll be honest, I feel uncomfortable with the conversation. There's a, feels, feels like there's a lot of anger. And maybe there's some things that we need to work out and talk about.
No anger, that's my voice.
No, no, I'm not, no, 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 no. Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm just.
We're each doing our.
Maybe it's frustrating, it's frustrating. Um, the next process, next year process will be a little smoother for everybody so that um, there's more information. There's no wild statements made. There's more information collected. There's, you know, so that we look sort of on the same page. Um, we're prepared that, you know, if this goes through, the voters can make the decision that we have, we may, they will have this in their hands also. So um, this will be available for them as well. So we'll provide all the information we can.
Well, um, there'll only be one of us at your meeting because all three towns are having, on the same night. Approximately the same time, so it's gonna be a little challenging for us to cover all three of them um, at the same time. But we'll do the best and uh, we'll provide as much information as we can if you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the school committee members who showed up as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the discussion vote relative to ARPA. Nicole, did you want to address that?
Oh, before your packet, you have.
Oh, Nicole, hold. Do we have enough?
Yep.
The form for you to open your sewer commission?
I do.
Alright, um, we're gonna let, have, open the sewer commission meeting? Yeah, so Brian can go. Thank you, Brian, for sitting.
Um, okay, welcome to the sewer commission meeting and it's seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-two.
Yes, I think so. Um, I only have a question in public, especially our business. Second order of business is, I think we should, um, I know Nicole had started this work, but discussing management of this sewer department. Bring in outs- outsourcing management person in the company. Um, I think we should uh, be together to start looking for proposals so that we can get these people in place and uh, work for the, on the system side.
The one question I have about that is that is part of the process, right, that gets up in the air.
It is.
You had to budget that this year in the sewer budget, right?
We did, we put six.
Fifty dollars, yeah.
Fifty bucks, sixty thousand.
Should cover that cost.
I think the, we got some like soft numbers just to see where we're at, about three, three thousand a month. So, and I think we need some additional financial oversight there too. Uh, we maybe I'll get both in one, we don't know. A lot of these companies people to do the financial and they do the oversight, the paperwork. Second would be, you know, state federal paper.
Make a motion. RFP, uh, RFP out.
Nicole, did you hear that for the minutes?
Well, it's being recorded for the minutes, but I, I do need to hear um, motion for RFP for oversight of the sewer project?
Yes, R, RFP for a management company for the oversight of the sewer.
Okay, got it, thanks.
It's voted two to one, two and, sorry, two and a, there's only two of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm late.
It's at seven twenty-five.
At seven twenty-five, we're turning the year.
Alright, thank you, Brian. Nicole, we're on to the discussion vote for ARPA.
Okay, in your packet, you have um, a quote from, um, Ludlow Construction. And it's for uh, the replacement of four hydrants that are not working right now. And um, so there, you know, obviously to remove the old hydrant, install a new valve, install new couplings. Install new six inch pipe up to ten linear feet per lateral and install a new hydrant at ten thousand six hundred dollars each. Um, I was. Here we go, um, hoping that you would approve uh, an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for fire hydrants. When I add this up, it's forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars, but in the event there might be some other accessory apparatus that needs to be replaced. Um, you know, just so we have that little bit extra, but obviously if not, then it will be just sitting in the ARPA still.
About forty-nine thousand.
Once the project is, sorry?
About forty-nine thousand, just to keep it under the fifty thousand.
Oh, right. I mean, we could even say forty-five. It's forty-two four, so that's fine.
So hang on the math.
That doesn't work though.
Ten thousand six times six hydrants?
Five, four.
Four hydrants.
Four.
Because it says submit, replace six each hydrant systems.
That's sixty-three six.
Oh, it's supposed to be four.
I was just doing the six.
Yeah. Wait a minute.
See how it says.
I'll get a new quote from them. Uh, they, it's supposed to be four, so I will get a new quote from them. Um, certainly before, again, like you know, I have to, I have to be very detailed in reporting for ARPA. So I will make sure that I get a new quote and then I have a cover letter that goes over it that I sent accounting to make sure that, you know, that they know what it's for and what it's not to exceed or what the exact amount is. So it should be for four. Um, I apologize.
So do we have a motion to um, approve um, the payment of the four hydrant uh, removal and replacement by Ludlow Construction out of, not to exceed forty-nine thousand out of ARPA?
I would make a motion to do just that.
The moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so that's it, Nicole.
Thank you. The next, the second.
Can we skip, can we, would you guys mind if we move to the um, the last item up first? Rebecca Bottomley, the disclosure.
Sure.
Okay, so in your, in your packet, there's a disclosure um, from Rebecca Bottomley relative to her participation on the Harvard Conservation Commission. Um, and um, Nicole, do you want to talk about the process and consulting with town council?
So Rebecca Bottomley took the initiative to call um, ethics to discuss uh, her position as a conservation commission member. And also as an abutter to the potential proposed um, new uh, sewer pump station project. Um, and so we, she, she got the form as she said she needed to. She filled it out, it was great. And um, then I sent it over to council to see exactly what we need to do. And I got the response that it's uh, it's up to the board to decide uh, whether or not she's allowed to participate. And without her, there's no quorum. So uh, it's, you know, she did, she signed, she signed the declaration, the disclosure. So um, council has given a motion that you can put forth and allow her to participate in the project as necessary because it's near a perennial stream for conservation to oversee, to look it over.
You guys feel comfortable? Sure. You can turn the motion.
Do I? Discussion?
Well, I actually don't know.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
No, I understand. I would make a motion that the board vote to acknowledge the conflict of interest disclosure filed by Rebecca Bottomley relative to her participation as a member of the Conservation Commission with respect to the Hardwick Road Pump Station Project and that the board declare that she may participate in the matter because her interest is not so substantiate, substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the service, services which the town may expect from her.
The move's in seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Nicole, did I, did I jump over something that you wanted to talk about with ARPA?
Yeah, there was one more.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. There's two proposals in front of you for the new website. Um, and uh, I know we had talked about it before because they're like twenty-three pages each that you hadn't had a time to really look through it. Um, I got a call back, so I use Gov, Gov Office for over a decade, so I'm very familiar with it. But it is a little more extensive and I do see not, every time I go to a town website, I always look at their designer. And, and so ninety percent of them are civic plus. We also receive um, an updated quote of thirty percent off of the first year if we go with civic plus. So once again, as we had discussed before, our cer- our, our website was compromised. It's not, it's not like a government protected website. Um, it's not ADA compliant. It was hacked. We weren't able to get on for a while. Our webmaster also, you know, is requesting that. Our webmaster also, you know, is requesting that somebody else sort of take it over. Um, and but she does all coding, which I don't do any coding, I, it's built and then I can work in it, but I can't actually build it. So, this is where we're at to uh get a new website. I have had several residents ask me for a much, you know, for a, a new and improved website. So, I would recommend to you that we go with Civic Plus. It is uh very much used throughout even the whole entire United States, um, if you look at governmental websites. And it's secure, and it's easily navigated, it's ADA compliant, um, so, yeah, um, so we can get going on that. And then, if I would recommend a not to exceed of ten thousand dollars, it, the total with a thirty percent first year um discount is nine thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars for three years.
Questions, discussions?
Uh, I did review both of them, it's certainly not anything that I do on a daily basis, um, I, I looked through them. They both seemed at least um well comparable, you know, you could, right, you could, you know, you could see that they are both gonna be offering similar services, so I am really gonna refer to what Nicole suggested and recommend, it would be my opinion.
I let you all in.
Yeah, it's nothing I.
Okay, I, I don't, I guess I don't understand the expense of it, but I guess it would be just.
I, I can't hear Rob.
I said, I, I don't really understand the, the expense of it, but like, it is what it is, I, I don't think you're.
Okay. Yeah, that's absolutely typical now. It's um, and it's even less than I expected, I think because we have a smaller town, but um you know, these are all the services, the, the cost of just doing it. Um, and it is going, like I said, it will be more secure, it will, you know, it's a government protected website. Um, it's ADA compliant, so eventually, very soon, we're going to have to do an ADA compliancy review of our town, and this would be the first thing that's already there, so it's visually, um, you know, works vis- you know, for the, for the visual impaired. So, um, you know, there's just a lot of different things, and I guess the biggest thing that it made me bring this to you was that we crashed, and we, you know, it took a lot to get it back up, and somebody had hacked it. Um, and Julie Marquette, who's our webmaster, is also, you know, doesn't, isn't, doesn't really wanna do it anymore, so I don't know who else would do it, cause I can't build things like that.
Nicole, what was the first year dollar amount again?
It's um, so it's thirty-four fifty a year for three years, um, but then, if my calculations are correct, thirty percent off thirty-four fifty makes it twenty-four thirty-five for the first year, and then thirty-four fifty for year two and three.
So the total?
And zero to bill.
Was like ninety-nine something, was it?
Ninety-three thirty-five.
I don't even know the number. Civic plus?
Civic plus, was it?
Yeah.
We've got the uh I think Civic Plus for our website for
She's not.
Not touching ten thousand? What's in the year?
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? So Nicole, in case you didn't hear the motion, the motion was to um engage Civic Plus for our website for um a not to exceed of ten thousand for the three years. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Was there anything else on ARPA?
Nothing else, thank you. Uh, I will say one more thing just because it's, it's, it's relevant. Um, we're gonna have that water commission meeting coming up, April, I mean, sorry, September twelfth. I had uh just randomly the, the firm that was, is, has, is gonna do the uh water meters come in today, and um I asked for an updated quote for that time because it's a few months old, and he also said that they're a few months out. So, that's just for reference, it'll probably be like a week, a win- a week, a winter project, uh, if we do approve that at that time.
Thank you. Alright, the last item on the agenda, newer, well, it's definitely not the last, but we moved it to last. New sewer project pump station location. Nicole, can you talk to the, us about this?
I can, so, you know, the approved site was this small portion that we believe Marguerite Crevier owned. So we had the title search done, and it comes back that even though Mr. Hanson, Hanson owned it, when he had a will, it wasn't explicitly given to anyone. So now, there, there needs to be due diligence done, a search done on any of his relatives, any siblings, any cousins, any relatives whatsoever. Um, we need to identify all of them, reach out to all of them. If we were gonna take it, give notice of taking, accept it at town meeting. It's, it's a, it's a long process, and it's, it's not that it can't be done or hasn't been done, but we're not gonna be able to have it done before we have to let USDA know that we have the site secure. So that is one of the conditions, is obviously, we need to have um control of the site where the pump station's going to go. It should be going on town property. So, I, I reached out to DPC, we can have a much more lengthy discussion on Monday. However, the consensus was just to maybe move it over a thousand feet because we own two and a half acres right next to that small parcel. So they're designing it where it goes, you know, as long as it's in the vicinity, everything else should stay the same. Um, but it's not gonna be able to go in that parcel right now because we just, we won't have site secure before we can, before we do the project.
So Nicole, on the map?
In your packet. Yep, I, on the map. I, unfortunately Jen's off this week, and she can just read these so much better to me. But um, it's, it's sort of on, it's sort of on two maps, which is why I gave them both to you. And the little yellow, the little parcel that we were gonna put it on is now cropped out in red ink. So if you can see, it looks like we should just shove it, shove it, uh, shift it over a little bit.
So is this the, the new proposed?
No, that, yeah, that's the proposed actual pump station.
But not shifting it on this parcel?
That hasn't been shifted, that's, that was, that was what was um sent to Conservation Commission. I just wanted you to see again, like, uh, maybe not necessarily the exact lot lines, but what, you know, what it entails. The small building and the, and out structures, and obviously fencing, it needs to be fenced in for security purposes, and uh then the, the, the perimeter will be shielded with some sort of vegetation. It's still making it obviously like before, what you said, with making it look like an old building, or, you know, in with the character of the neighborhood, white with black shutters, or whatever the, the rest look like, and then some mature vegetation. Like, we had already talked about all of that, yeah. I just thought I would give you that for a frame of reference on what it looks like.
That front edge right there, only a hundred feet that the town owns. There's a hundred feet plus.
Yeah.
So you're gonna shift this thing, basically, if you're looking at that spot, it's gonna have to be to the right center of that area. To keep it.
I, I don't know. I don't, do you know how, how big the actual, I don't know how big the actual, like, um, facility is?
Well, we got some tanks there. We got a building of twenty-five fifteen, that's in the same location as the city.
Yeah, this isn't, this, this, this isn't shifted.
Right, right.
The DPC back in twenty eighteen had a drawing.
Let's see, if you look at the little triangle on this one?
Right.
That's where it can't go.
That's where it can't go.
Right.
So now, if, if you take the dimensions of this, and needing to shift it over.
Well, I have a drawing out in the part that shows DPC did it showing back in twenty eighteen, showing the station, where, basically where the tractors are.
Right, so.
Right.
More center than off the side.
It's gotta be far right center.
It had a driveway coming off of thirty-two A and another driveway going down Greenwich Road, and that's, so he probably is going back to that original drawing, I guess.
But is it even gonna work?
Uh.
Dimension-wise, is it even gonna work?
No, I don't.
I feel like if, if it fit on that little triangle, it would fit right next to it, I, I don't know.
No, our point is, it's gonna take up that whole area.
Yes, right.
It's gonna what?
Take up that whole area.
So, so let me just recap, just sort of, um, so when you went and looked at the possible spots, Rob, that were available, we've already exhausted two of the spots. The last spot was, I have, I have to take my mask, okay, cause I'm gonna asphyxiate myself.
No, it's fine.
Especially with my braces, my braces on, um, so, um, the last, I'm just, because I can't, honestly, I can't remember, and that's a function of what I've gone on. The third spot was by the tennis courts, is that correct? So those were the only three spots that you guys identified when you went, when you walked with DPC?
And Scott.
And Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I asked Nicole to go back to um Justin?
Yeah.
And I, I think she's been in contact with Justin. So I, you and I had a conversation, Nicole, and I asked you to go back to Justin with um a revisit of the tennis courts.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's where we're at with that.
So, 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 yeah, so that was the three, those are the three identified locations, and the tennis courts were number three because of the elevations, et cetera. Um, I don't know that it absolut- you know, with, with this new information, that it absolutely can't go there. Um, I mean, it's gonna be more designed, et cetera, whatever, more money, I don't know. Um, but I know that there was a reason that it wasn't chosen, I think it was the elevation thing. So, um, that's why I just was like, well, we own it right next door, it's not part of Article ninety-seven, it's not anything else besides town-owned land, and we can put it there, and that's it.
So, so.
I didn't get a chance to go up there and look at it.
Okay, so.
Sure about that?
So.
If there are no covenants on that property?
Well.
Are we, I mean, before we, honestly, Nicole, before we even step forward to another spot, even if it's shifting this spot, are we sure that there are no covenants, no easements, no anything on that property before we say one more place that we're gonna put this pump station, that we're gonna have to turn around and say, we can't put this pump station?
So, so I would make a suggestion that if we're gonna have her look at that, she looks at both locations.
Make sure there's no covenants and.
Make sure.
So really quick, we already did it, we already did it on, Katie Klein already did it on this other one that's right next to this little parcel, and is sending me the legal opinion.
Okay, can we also have them look at the tennis courts as well?
Yeah, that's a different story, I mean, that's obviously town-owned, it just has to do design work. I think Rob was curious about whether or not this parcel has any covenants on it, which I told her all about the Article ninety-seven, et cetera, and she's like, absolutely not, I've already done it all, I'll send you the opinion.
Okay. I, I'm just.
No, no, I just, I wanna make sure before we do this thing again and again and again.
And I know one of the questions, some, we're waiting for questions for people to submit questions for our meeting next Monday evening. Hint, 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 hint.
Yeah.
It's gonna come up again about the tennis courts, I just wanna be sure that Justin and David are prepared to answer that question.
Yeah, I talked to them about that already, I said, okay, so we already know behind, just behind the uh historical society is not happening. Uh, this parcel, not happening. This other parcel could absolutely happen, what about the third one that you guys struck down in the first place? Make sure that if it can't happen, why, if it can't happen, how? But I, but that's all I'm gonna have for answers, like, I'm, I can't, I don't know, I, I can't read people's minds, so they're gonna have to send in questions if they've got other ones.
Agreed.
Can I ask one right now?
You can't, so I went into this meeting saying that we weren't gonna allow a lot of public comment on it, it was just for the discussion of the board, because we're gonna have a whole big information thing on this on Monday.
We really don't have any answers.
We don't. So we'll, I'll allow you one question.
So regarding the, the location next to the historic society, given the fact that I, I believe that the historic society had more where that land, right, anyway, bottom line, if it's on town property and it's mine, I would prefer not to have it behind the historic sports. I think it makes more sense if it depends, we've always felt that, if it's needed. But, why not, if it, if tennis courts are for some reason, why not go back to this older location? Cause it's not, they just chose to not put it in their backyard, they put it over on the other side.
I believe the accurate thing on that, Nicole, is that it wouldn't, there was something it wouldn't meet.
Well, we, we have to get, the historic commission would have to vote for it so we can get the historic, whatever that document.
I can only hear you, Julie.
Um, Rob was saying that the historic commission would have to vote on it to get the historic, to, to have it go to sort of national for approval, but wasn't there an issue with that site determined subsequent to that?
Well, it was initially.
I know.
It wasn't on town property, but then the second drawing that was done, at the second.
Put it on town property.
It was on town property, the problem was, um, the building that was there, that was, they thought was required to be with the, the low ground tanks, with the uh, so controls and stuff there, that was part of the problem, it filled up the space too much. Then the question was, could those, those things be put in the town barn and only have the tanks at ground level, manhole covers, in the middle of the driveway? That would make a lot of sense, cause then you can improve the town barn for town purposes beyond what it's already being used for now. No one would see it, you'd have manholes in the, in the concrete driveway going behind the historical society. There are other problems with that design, but that, what I'm trying to say is that, given the fact that you can't do it across the street anymore, or historical senate put it, go back and say, this is the only place it can go. They just chose to, they, they were given the choice of, do we want it in our backyard, or do we want it across the street? And they chose not in our backyard, that was the decision. They still need to make a decision because it's common property, and they're, and they do have some authority over that, but although, there is some question about that, because I always thought that the cemetery commission controlled the property, that's another thing.
So what is our board asking Nicole to do? We've asked her to go back and um make sure that the parcel next to it, um, there's no covenants or anything on it. We've asked her to go back to David and Justin and look at the tennis courts again. Um, honestly, the longer we, and I understand the importance of it, the longer we kick this can down the road, we are, we're not gonna meet our letter of conditions. We're not, so, um.
You're, you're not gonna need it anymore. Lock the, lock the apple in.
Okay. Whatever that is, well, the board has to make the decision on how we proceed with that.
Well, I mean, I just think before we bring anything back to the public, that this is let uh, now, make sure they can actually go.
Okay.
That's, that's just my personal feeling, cause I think people's here, well, it's going over here, it's going, well, no, can't go, can't go, you know, so let's just make sure we can actually put this. They have to put.
It's not. It's no other reason that it's the history, and the history of the town with all of their, you know, changing of, of, of property and entrust, and nobody pays taxes on this, this is not, where's this, where's this go, this is an abandoned road, like, that's what the issue is. It's not necessarily that we don't know what we're doing, or, you know, that, um, you know, we, we, we assumed it was somebody, well, it's not the case anymore, so look what assuming did to us, so, you know, um, that's, I, I think that that's exactly what I pulled legal, was, okay, if we're gonna shift it over, now, again, these are just tax maps, so they're not, they're not survey maps, I don't know how big that is exactly. Um, and it's just, it's just logical, that's why I did that, but um, it's that's, and that's why I said, okay, there were three positions, we absolutely cannot go behind the historical society. Okay, so it's either down here on the corner where apparently, you know, Ty and Bond had it years and years ago, and, or at the tennis court. So I said to them, please look at the tennis court, and if it can't go there, tell me why, if it can go there. why, if it can go there, show me how. And I need that opinion that this parcel is absolutely town owned, not subject to far to fairyland, I mean, to fairground land and and commons, et cetera, and 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 I and she already did.
Let's, let's do the same for the tennis courts.
I would say the same applies to the tennis courts because the page trust could have some crazy thing in there too.
Can we, can we flip this building sideways so it's not going this way? Because right now, what's happening is the the triangle part is going out, can we flip it and put it against here so it's not right there? Is there any reason we can't flip this?
Here's, here's.
You got the wetlands in there, the streams in there.
That that piece does not exist. The piece that Marguerite in theory owns is a twenty, is a fifty by fifty by fifty by sixty-five foot rectangle right there. That piece is non-existent. I got, get it on the cart if you wanna see it.
You look at this one. You've got the stream that runs through here, Julie, so you'd be running into that, that, that stream. So this, this, it's, it's right down here in the corner is what they've proposed, right?
That's this.
Right. If you go above it, you're gonna, you're gonna start running into the stream. So you you can't go here with it.
You actually don't have to be careful how close your points are with this, your sightlines are. This map doesn't show that.
No, it doesn't, but it should.
What I'm, what I'm trying to tell you is that actual piece in the deep is not drawn like that, it's different.
But isn't, so I don't mean to be stupid, but isn't, if we're looking at this is Greenwich Road here and this is Hardwick Road.
Right.
Isn't the stream right here?
No, the stream goes this way.
It goes through that, right?
This is bottom, it's right away that goes up to this line. Yeah.
I thought the stream came down this way.
No, it comes from Lisa's house, it's behind Lisa's house.
Oh, right.
The beavers.
Right, right, right. But there is one that comes this way also, isn't there?
Yeah, it comes down off.
There's another one that comes this way.
Um actually, you can see it on this one.
All right.
Anyway.
So Nicole, can you go back to them on those two suggestions from, that you heard from um Rob and Kelly and me as well?
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with Rob, let's make sure both sites are clear, let's not have to do this again with this.
It'll kill us time to, so by the time we bring it forward.
Right, have our.
So we're gonna have to provide them with the page trust records relative to that property and, because they likely don't have that.
It should all be reported.
Well, there's only that parcel that Bottomly owns and the one below it that's now probably where the tractors work.
We're talking about the, we're talking about the tennis courts.
I'm worried that there could be something over there for that matter.
Absolutely, well, it is town owned property and when you change town, when you change the use of town owned property that's considered a recreational area or parkland or whatever, it requires this Article ninety-seven. Now, Article ninety-seven is not an impossible task, it's what I would have to go through if I wanted to take APR, but it's like, when I own Gray Meadow Park, if I wanted to change that, that takes the two-thirds of the legislature, it's not a, it's just a process.
So so can you just double check on the the ten?
Make sure I.
On both, on both parcels that we don't have an Article ninety-seven issue?
And it's also.
I, I already know it for one parcel, so I will do my due diligence to get it as soon as possible for the other parcel.
Thank you.
Just the tennis court parcel, yeah.
It's just, those are questions that we're gonna be asked, we might as well have the answers to them.
The other question to ask, from what I understand, is do you need a town goat to change? I don't know if it's.
I can't hear him.
He's also saying that he believes that there's a town goat that needs to change the use from recreational.
And I told, and I could say it, but I got the legal opinion that there's not any of that on that property.
The tennis courts.
It's town.
Oh, that's the tennis court, I don't know.
So let's find out the same information for both parcels if we can.
Just to cover.
Will do.
Thank you. Anything else?
Can we listen from here, the box?
Yes.
Is that here? Oh, sorry.
One thing, Nicole, can you make sure that it hits our next agenda, um not on the twenty-second, on a subsequent meeting? That we need to um understand what's happening with, was that mentioned, it reminded me, uh, the property that has um the beaver issues? I just wanna understand what's happening from a conservation standpoint and um from a board of health standpoint.
Can you remind me what that property was?
Um.
Pretty much, uh.
Adjacent.
Road.
Adjacent to the common.
From the common up past the highway.
Lisa Condit.
Yeah.
Lisa Condit Highway.
Library.
Yep.
Two uh, two properties in between. Yep.
Aspiry, because I think the fire truck was down there.
They were, so they flushed the culvert.
Right.
And guess what wasn't moving this morning?
The water.
The water.
I thought they got, because the wildlife got.
Yep. And he set, he has set out three traps and hasn't trapped anything.
So can you follow, can we just make sure that gets on a subsequent agenda for us?
Unfortunately.
Well, I, am I, is there, am I not familiar with this for some reason or do I not remember or?
It's, so it's.
I don't, I don't.
It, it didn't come in front of us, it's just an issue because it's, it's an issue from a board of health standpoint, it's an issue from a conservation. We've got properties um that are next to Peter uh Greenwich Road that backyard, it's in one of our town buildings, there's a beaver dam.
The library.
The library.
The fire department.
Fire department, um and all of those properties that are.
In between.
Yeah, in between, that there's a beaver dam there and it's causing some significant damage.
Oh, definitely, I know from the library, from Julie, because it always gets so wet down there because.
It's flooding.
She does little educational things with the kids down and looking at the beavers, but they're flooding the.
Yeah.
Yes.
The library, okay.[1778.73]